And then about two weeks went by and they had my personal property, Ed catches, fence post, wire, everything in that pile. They ignited it, burnt it, and Jeff took the remainder and put it in the gravel pit that's on that subdivision property to get, basically, I felt, to get rid. Clean it up, number one, but you're rid of whatever didn't burn, because it was green wood, green brush and all that. And, you know, I understand they're trying to develop it, but where's the neighborly communication? They say I haven't been able to talk to them. Chris's girlfriend approached me six, eight months earlier and asked me, you know, if they want to develop it, move it. And I said, you know what? We can talk about this when Jeff moves that dirt pile off that 30-foot easement. If they're talking road to go through there, it's not going to be just on that 30-foot of ours. And that's private, and that's what people aren't understanding. It was never dedicated to that subdivision. And, you know, like Mark was saying, that when people take it upon themselves, how far does this go before it estimate? You know, I had all I could do to keep from getting aggressive and saying things. I just, it was so disturbing to me, I just shut down. I just, you know, I couldn't believe what I was witnessing. Same.
Maybe somebody hasn't told us your story.
Deputy Harris felt very distraught, really. I mean, he just couldn't believe what he was, and I had the ability to say, hey. And under Sheriff Manon, too. They had talked to him, they told him to stop doing what you're doing, just stop. Tell, we'd sit down and talk about this. And they would go back the next day, the next day, wait a day or two, and it got to the point where my personal property was on Stewart's ground, which they drug, odd on my property. And since Under Sheriff Manon talked to Jeff and told him to stay out of the property with the Bobcat, and up the pers-, you know, permanently until we discuss this, he had his grandchild, maybe 10 years of age, get in the Bobcat, and he was on the four-wheeler, and he was coaching him how to grapple that stuff and haul it off to the burn pot. And I thought, when you go to that point involving your grandchildren, I gotta ask myself, if you can do this to somebody you've just taught him, is he gonna act out later? I mean, just to watch the whole thing, it was very disturbing. And I guess I'm just pretty disappointed the way it's all been happening.
It sounds like the Hatfields and McCoys in some ways.
Yeah, yeah. And that's the way I kind of felt. But, you know, respecting them and not acting out or lashing out at them when they were hitting us nonstop, it's hard to deal with. And, you know, I was just trying to show our part of being a neighbor and saying, hey, stop and let's talk about this.
So, if you'll indulge me, I could be educated, I suppose, and I've spoken with Nicole some, the minor subdivision on the Conrad property, is that pending through the review process and analysis, correct?
That's correct. For the minority.
And so, what role does the county take, if any, in the maintenance or upkeep or use of the ingress and egress for who is?
Conrad subdivision will be using the Carroll Drive access.
Okay.
Unless they can prove that they have access via Mosted Lane.
Okay, and the width of that for a minor subdivision?
Six feet.
Six feet? Okay. But the county doesn't take any role in maintaining those roads, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, there's a sort of problem. I think we're gonna have to grind it out about this dirt pile on the public easement and then the use of the Mosted side of the Mosted Lane. But I don't know that we have a fight with the county. I've spoken with Susan Lee and Nicole. So, again, it seems to me the business for this commission is to converse with the county attorney and the sheriffs. And there's not a bright line difference between when the sheriff leaves a civil dispute alone and when it is a Hatfields and McCoys. But the message that the Mosteds got here was, it is lawless. And that's...
Brandon?
Yes?
Do you want to add anything to that?
I mean, everything they said is, you know, what happened. Obviously, we can't leave a civil dispute like I was instructed. I called the county attorney while I was there to see what law enforcement could be, because it was, at that point, there was, in my belief, there was criminal mischief as they drove down their fence line and just mowed over their posts and their barbed wire. It was in the middle of the easement, but it's still their property. When I called her, she said that I was to leave and that she would not, she would dismiss every citation, wouldn't look at any arrests or any paperwork that I sent over, and that she had already told the Mosteds that. So, I tried this...
What was she basing that on?
What's that?
What was she basing that on?
Past dealings with the Conrad, Stewart's, and Mosted. That's basically what I found that she was basing that on.
She had also told me when I was on the phone with her, which I think part of what she was basing it on, too, is that she had had a discussion with the attorney for Viber and Stewart, and he had told her that, well, I mean, if it's the attorney for the other side, doesn't the county attorney make their own determination out of that? Why do you go with just what the attorney in the lawsuit is saying?
I think the Mosteds are also frustrated that the Broward County has paid an attorney to give an opinion that is the opposite of what the Viber lawsuit says. And it appears the county attorney did not review that and analyze that. Again, that's a civil dispute, it's in litigation, that'll work out. But when there's a criminal act going on and the police objectively think so, you guys at the county, the county's the client, have a lot of clients, ask me to explain and justify my actions, and I think they need to. In this case, I think she got it wrong. But the Mosteds, they don't have a claim against the county other than, you know, citizens who were upset with the government.
Brenda, did you want to add anything?
I took the initial report back in, I think it was April or May, from the Mosteds on the damage, it would be to the east end of the easement. And I submitted that information to the county attorney with photographs and all that. And I still haven't heard anything back. I just happened to be gone figuring out wedding cake for my son's wedding during this incident. So, as I discussed with Deputy Harris, the minor sheriff, we called the county attorney to advise. She doesn't know how to do her jobs. So, thank you.
May I speak to our neighbor one? And we do have an attorney, so I think, really, this is a new point that has to be settled in court of law. One thing I will say, Scott has been very, Scott has never raised his voice. He has gotten in front of our truck screaming at us to run her over.
Absolutely.
There is, yes, you did. There is paperwork here that Tom Budowitz was on the original lawsuit, and he has given all his information to Mr. Fiede. Here's a copy for you also.
I'm sorry, can you...
Nita Ibarra, I'm a co-owner of the property.
Sure.
But if you'd like to read that first paragraph.
Did you see it?
Where Dee says, yes, it is the easement, and all they wanted originally was a road agreement for upkeep.
I can't find the sheet that we're handling.
Oh, you did. Okay, thank you. So, that's another part of the paper. And on June 9th of 2012, Scott did stand on our property saying, yes, to me directly, it is an easement. If you get Jeff to move the dirt off part of his 30-foot access, that Scott would come down and help us take the fence out. So, I just think it has to go to court, and we will abide by what the judge says.
Thank you.
We fully believe we have access, and that is easement. Mr. Stewart wasn't able to be here, but did he call you?
He did call me last night.
And he said, yes, he is in total agreement. He would like that easement opened up. Like, he wasn't able to come today.
A final thought, I suppose, is I hope there won't be any more need for law enforcement now that everybody has a lawyer and this is brand new in court finally after 15 years. I hope. But it's concerning to have a standing order not to fight crime with your company. So, do you have any other questions to ask?
Brenda, questions, comments?
I wish the county attorney had, you know, she was good.
Right, I do, too.
Is she back now, by chance? She's not gonna be here, oh, okay.
The county attorney just advised us to get legal counsel. She could not make any decision. It was out of her realm and for us to hire an attorney to have this settled through a court of law.
Thank you.
No, I don't know. Don't.
Can I say something?
Just one second, John.
Before the deputies...
Okay, go ahead.
This is almost an exact duplicate of an incident I had for the end of September where an individual that claimed they had some access to the property tore down a gate and what have you, but before the deputy come, Carla, our county attorney, micro-managed him and told him what to do, how to do, where to go, and the end results, and in between time, she recorded a fraudulent document as far as a deed. So, this is a common practice. Carla is micro-managing the deputies before they even get to the projects to go to do what they're doing. Now, our sheriff most of the time don't even know this has happened, because Carla won't contact her, she goes and does exactly what she wants to do. Something needs to be done about this county attorney.
Well, I have another comment, too. We went to Brenda and told her about the situation. She told us to drive on Jeff Stewart's property to get to the back.
I'm sure that was decided.
Well, why wouldn't Jeff file trespassing papers on this? We did never do that. We believe that's an easement. You recognized it as an easement for that letter.
So, I think this can all work, again, if there's more communication between a bunch of elected officials, the sheriff, county attorney, county commission. But the county is the client. I think that the Mosteds would like to see more of that. And this dispute, there's no need for us to shout, we can work it out in court.
That's right.
So...
And I would like to hear Carla's.
Yeah.
I mean, we're pretty much most people involved today, and Carla couldn't be here, but provide everyone's...
Sure.
But I would like to hear from her.
But when that happens, I presume it will be a public meeting.
Is it, love?
Perfect. Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks, you guys.
Thank you.
Okay. I have seven minutes, September 30th, 2015, and October 7th.
We received those minutes both last week and the week before, so I go move that we approve the minutes of September 30th and October 7th.
I'm going to have to do it though. I want to work this one more again, there's a change in the...
I thought it was Christmas, right? No, not at all, not at all. It's fun, you're under safe. All right, you guys. Is it the worst, or just like? Galton County Commissioners have it. Do you know on this, Brenda? It's Missouri River Task Force program, and I don't see, I mean, Wayne has signed it and Commissioners from Galton County have signed it, but I don't know whether we're supposed to sign it.
Usually, there's a signature page. Well, that's on the front page. It looks like a lot of verbiage, but I don't see a signature page for us unless I'm overlooking it. Do you want me to take it back to the insurance?
I don't know. Maybe I'm missing it. I don't know. Let's move to the second amendment, it's from September 30th, 2013, and October 7th, 2013, we approved on. There is aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Elaine, I think you guys should be the contractor on this.
So, is that place dressed to sign?
Unwind it. Or the undersheriff did.
Well, that little rascal, huh?
Mm-hmm. So, I will have him have another one set down, how about? Face sheet, just this one.
That's fine. You tell him not to sign it, please.
Should we still vote on it?
I think it would be a good idea.
Then you could just sign it and he comes in.
And that was the contract for Missouri River Task Force that we've done for a million and a half years, so.
There's a move.
Move to the second amendment, we approve Missouri River Task Force contract. On, there is aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Is there an amount involved in it?
I don't see there. The contract amount is $8,808.40. The cash match requirement is $14,371.60 for a total contract amount of $23,180.
And if they do a drug bust, so to speak, and they confiscate vehicles, homes, whatever, that money comes to the county, is that correct?
For those that are either charged or committed in this county.
Right, correct. This is a contract with Tri-County Mechanical and Electrical for energy saving, and the payback would be 1 year, 0.10.
I will move that we allow our maintenance supervisor to move forward in the purchase of the heaters contained in that that we discussed last week that will, in the end, end up saving the county taxpayers' money and heating costs.
The price is $9,980.
That's the heaters we're on, though. And what was the cost in the $9,000?
$9,980.
Those are any other bids?
The way that works is there's a payback also detailed there. I believe one was nine months, the other one was near ten months. And that is contract servicing, I think, contract something. Anyway, what it is, is that payback is the amount of time it takes the savings to actually pay off the cost. And then after that, it's just savings. So, that's what that means.
I'm sure if I made this, $9,980 was for replacing control of the damper systems on the first and second floor of the courthouse.
Thank you.
And those are old enough that there's no long-complexed parts also.
Second. It's a move to the second amendment, we signed the Tri-County Mechanical and Electrical bid, and that's replaced boiler and the energy savings payback, 1.10 years. Colin Fair, say aye.
Aye.
That's not the border, is it? It's a third pass.
Control, controls, yeah.
Colin Fair, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Something's in there, it's three copies.
We are pleased to confirm our understanding of the nature and limitations of the services we are to provide for Broward County Commissioners. We will apply the agreed-upon procedure with Broward County Commissioners as specified,
listed in Appendix A. The engagement solely is to assist Broward County Commissioners in performing the procedures, pardon me, as outlined in the attached appendix. Our engagement to apply agreed-upon procedures will be conducted in accordance with the testation standards established by American Institute of Certified Public Accountants. And it rolls, I mean, it's...
County Hall, county funds, you're in, is that what I'm asking?
What it is, is review all grants and expenditures to verify that they were allocated to the particular grant, active and closed, based upon supporting documentation. The grants we will review are Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation, Phases 1, 2, and 3, Missouri River, no, Missoula River account, it's the Bradley Grants, and MDA Grants. Review cash on hand to determine if it's properly reconciled, provide a report of our procedures, including a list of potential discrepancies.
This is something we aren't holding on, this is just the contract, and this is really, not just the weed department. We agreed to use the county, why? So, with that, I move that we sign the contract for the weed department and grants audit with Andersons, we move...
It's moved to the second amendment, we sign the contract with Andersons and Yellen to review the weed district. On, there is aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried.
And we voted on it a couple of months ago. This is just the contract that we're signing. It's already been approved.
Do you want to say, I need to tap this, please?
Gotcha.
I have claims in the amount of $22,880.80.
I move, maybe there's claims of 22, or whatever, the amount, 20,000 or something.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second.
It's moved to the second amendment, that we approve claims with the voucher date of 10/8/2013 in the amount of $22,880.80. On, there is aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Okay. I have a truck wreck local protocol with Julie and registered sanitary, Carla's the county attorney, myself is chairman for Board of Health. You know, just per the call, what they have to do, just an accident.
I move that we sign the truck wreck local protocol and then also take it to the Board of Health.
Moved to the second amendment, truck wreck local protocol, approved. On, there is aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. I don't think we have to do anything, this is a journal entry, State of Montana Department of Revenue, Office of Collections, and Doug wrote in a check for $27,406.20.
We've just been compiling the journal, journals for a while now. I'm also thinking we need to kind of organize and have a working need to go through those as well.
Things are, do you know what this is, Tony? It's a commercial gas range, but with the same use, and then also the hood.
I do. I don't believe we need the hood, but that would be something Mike could correct if I have wrong. The stove, the gr-... if I have wrong. The stove, the grant, was for nine hundred dollars, not the cost of the stove, so I was mistaken on that last week. The total cost is the twenty-one ninety-nine. The hospital would like to buy the senior stove that they have right now that isn't working, and I don't know what that dent will make in the sale price. But the senior center does not have enough to buy the stove itself. It used to be years ago that the commission would purchase those large capital items for the senior center. So these are just the actual going prices for the stove that's needed for what they do over there. They have, the holiday season coming up, their numbers are up both for conjugate meals as well as eating meals, by an average about a dozen per day, and so demand is growing, which is actually a good thing. If you look at the reason that they started this program years ago, it was to help people to stay in their homes and yet get a good nutritional meal. And again, the savings to taxpayers if people can stay in their own homes versus going prematurely to another home is on average about eleven, I believe it's eleven thousand a month or eleven hundred a month. Anyway, substantial per person. So that's the cost of the stove.
I believe Mike has been the one handling it.
But he has to bring that information forward so that we have a solid idea of what the cost was.
Did he carry what he thought he could get out of the stove?
That is actually something that the senior center, with the chair being Elsie Stroh, is working on with the hospital. So they're working on that part. Mike is not involved in that, neither are we.
So do we need this twenty-two hundred now, or after that's left?
Well, we're gonna have to purchase the stove. There's no question there. They need a new stove. So I think the only question is, is how much do we help them with? I think, you know, we can certainly vote on ordering the stove and then work out the finances with the senior dinner club board and the hospital, working with them sometime soon. But right now, there's a propane leak. There are days when you can smell it over there, and I think we need to act before we have a major accident.
What kind of liability are we, do we have if in fact we sell it to the hospital and that something happens?
Then I don't know, and I don't know what the hospital's plan is. If they have somebody that's going to work on it, if they have a contingency plan, if they plan on turning off that part that's broken. They don't do quite as much to the extent that the senior dinner club does because of the conjugate meals. So I don't know any of those answers.
That's my only concern, is if we sell it to them, or senior center does, and something blows up.
I don't know what they're, if we want, we can certainly have them come to a meeting and talk to us and give us all those answers if you'd like.
Thoughts Franklin?
Yeah, well, they're taking it as is, so we shouldn't have to be responsible in that. Was there ever, I can't remember, that sort of a cost to repair the one, this one here, the one that's in there?
I don't remember seeing that.
I don't either. So, is this bigger, this just work better for the seniors center than what's there?
It has, it's sixteen inches wide. It has ten burners and two standard ovens.
So it's bigger everything than the other one? They only have, assuming as if, why the older, why it wasn't to be fixed, and that's the hospital thinks they can fix it. I guess, you know, put everyone in there, but I wonder what the situation was. I mean, if it can be repaired, the hospital would use it unless they feel they need a lot bigger one for twelve people.
I didn't hear you, John.
For twelve people.
There's twelve more people, John, not just twelve people.
When I used to go there, twelve was more than was usually there.
If you like more than that now.
And you have to include conjugate meals. They have quite a few conjugate meals. Those are meals on wheels.
Yeah.
We have a lot of people served with that, and frankly, it keeps people healthy. For some people, that's their only nutritious meal of the day.
Well, and if they eat cereal and toast, someone said, oh, breakfast and supper, but they have a balanced meal, I find that. Paul?
The hospital may be just purchasing the old stove to use for parts.
That's true. I would entertain the motion to go ahead with this, but also ask the seniors to have something in writing of what the hospital plans to do.
I will move that we move forward with assisting the senior center to purchase the needed new stove. Details to be worked out with them in a personal visit. How's that?
Yes, is this item on the agenda? This has been ongoing.
This certainly fits under county safety issues.
Under what, county safety?
This also fits under county facilities maintenance upkeep. It also fits under, I guess those two very strongly.
That's a little loose.
I'm gonna hold my motion. There are certain things that we have to be able to do as a commission, and one of them is addressing safety needs of our seniors. So I stand by my motion.
I just wish we had some information on whether the cost of fixing the stove is there, which we barely ever have.
It's definitely pretty old.
This has been the discussion for months. If you had a question on that Franklin, I guess, speaking again for our seniors, I would wish that you would have made that call and done that homework prior to the eleventh hour.
Then why wasn't it more specifically listed in the agenda if it's been on discussion for months? Paul?
This is something that's come up many times on the agenda already, and it's been discussed many times already. And if I recall correctly, the last time Mike was here and talked about it, he said that it wasn't practical to fix the old stove. It wasn't economically feasible to fix it. In the first place, the stove was inadequate, and in the second place, the expense to repair it was astronomical. They had done patchwork on it, and it's just beyond repair at this point.
And it has a propane leak?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
We have a motion. There is not a second, but we have been discussing for a second.
Okay, I'll second. Before we discuss the discussions more here, it's more discussion. Like, it's probably good reason for it. The thing is, all of a sudden, someone else would have taken it. Was there a possibility? I don't, I'm not against the update form in that, so.
I think Paul's got a very legitimate comment there with, maybe they're gonna take it for parts, for somebody that they have, rather than to fix it up because it is so cost prohibitive to fix it.
That's it. Not that they never say it's cost, but actually, I have a problem with it for the senior center. I should have had full information on what the cost was, but...
Well, and I think he came back and said he couldn't even get the parts.
And I assume that stove was probably three years old, four years.
At least.
I assume it's the one that ended when it was built.
Okay, it's moved in seconded. Did we go ahead and give approval to the senior center to go ahead and buy a new commercial gas range? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose the same? Motion carried. And I guess I would ask them to please contact the hospital and see if they are gonna do it.
It's definitely going out as is, and then whatever, then whatever money comes out, it'll come back off of this.
May I make a suggestion? Why don't we ask the senior center to come and talk to us about the stove, about any other needs they have about their numbers, and then also plan after that meeting to go over to the senior center for lunch?
I think that's a good idea.
We could schedule them at eleven fifteen, and go join them for lunch at eleven thirty. Would the twenty-eighth work okay?
Looks good for me.
Sure you put out hold on the new stove? Is that what you're doing there?
No, that one just went through.
So why do we have to meet with them?
Well, 'cause they like us to do that, to be honest. And usually once a year, we try and go over and have a meal with them.
Do you?
I mean, it's not a free meal. We have to pay for it, of course, as we should. But just so they know that we care.
Besides, it's good food?
Yes, it is. Yes.
I think it's a wonderful thing because my mom, she was getting old, couldn't live alone, but if she could have gone there for one meal, that would have been wonderful because we had the contact.
Or they can deliver it.
Yeah. Well, we end up, she ended up with Alzheimer's, and it didn't work, so...
Well, I mean, they do deliver it to...
And I think to quite a few people. This is a hazard mitigation grant program. And it tells how we can apply, and that we may be eligible with the hazard mitigation grant program.
Does it feel like it, do you have a good...
Actually, we should keep it in the mail. Sean's gonna be coming to see us next week about the issue.
We'll just keep it, I think?
Yeah. He'll kind of add to some of what Mike was here talking to us about, too. So if Mike is available, it'd be good to ask him to come back.
This is from MDT Highway Rail Grade Crossing Signal and Service Project at Indian Creek Road. Attached to three original tri-party service agreements between Broward County, Montana Rail Link, and the state to cover subject signal and service project. Please sign and have a test each original and return all three documents to us for further processing. Please do not date these agreements. Your fully executed original will be returned to you. Thank you for your interest in the Montana Highway Rail Safety Program. If you have any questions or concerns, contact me, John Altough, Highway Rail Safety Manager.
Now, they would upgrade the one at Indian Creek, is that my understanding?
The state will pay eighty percent, and the rev load will pay twenty.
May I have a question?
Yes, John.
Are they gonna put down a crossing in there, or just upgrade the type warning devices they got now? Missouri has one tremendous amount of traffic there, and a lot of people don't pay no attention to nothing. So is it, what is being proposed? Can you tell me?
I'm looking. Improved crossing surface material. May include any necessary upgrades to the track structure to accommodate a forty-foot improvement crossing surface in accordance with Exhibit E of this agreement, and in accordance with the recommended installation practices.
So they're just working on the road, the crossings, yeah?
The crossings, yeah.
I never could understand about every year they tear that all out, why they don't put concrete in there.
Oh, that's, I wonder if this might be for either concrete or that, you know, something they'll use that rubber matting in there, too.
Because right now, you gotta come almost to a stop rather than get shook out of your vehicle for the condition it's in.
That's what I assume. I don't, they're still in the study part, what they're gonna, how they're gonna fix it, maybe, huh?
Rev load will notify the county not less than ten working days prior to start crossing surface work. Installation of a new signal at a minimum height of thirty feet from the shoulder of the roadway in accordance with TCD. Total replacement of existing signal system with a new post-mounted twelve inches LED flashing lights and gates in accordance with manual on uniform traffic control devices.
It doesn't say, it doesn't say that what they're gonna put in the crossing shop. But I assume, if they're doing that much now, they're surely gonna, they're gonna either rubber or concrete up. I would, be my guess, I don't know. Apparently doesn't say it on here.
Should be nice if they put something in there that would last. Still be doing it every year.
I would, I would think that's what they'd be doing on there. They're gonna put this much in on the new signals and all that stuff that you just read off. And they keep saying, they keep mentioning the road or the shale.
Well, and it says here, the rev load improved crossing surface materials funded by the project. Improved crossing surface materials, including any necessary upgrades to the track structure to accommodate a forty-foot improvement, improved crossing surface in accordance with Exhibit E of this agreement, and in accordance with the recommended installation practices.
What is Exhibit E?
It just shows the picture of it, John. But it doesn't say what the material is made of.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Considering the very extensive work that they've done building a new site in there and everything, it wouldn't be surprising to see them put in something permanent in that crossing.
That's true.
Well, that's what I think you will about that. I'm sure it'd be that rubber or concrete.
Could one of your commissioners contact them, find out just what they're gonna do? Because it would really be a pleasure to have something that can stand up to those big heavy trucks, and what they've been doing doesn't. And at times, it actually, it starts splintering and breaking up if it's not that way right now.
I can't imagine doing all this work and not taking care of that part of it, but...
I'd be glad to, Colin. It just says optional fabric and grain height, ten-foot ties.
It says they just talked about the grain, John, but I don't see it.
The crossing must be of a width to suit, to suit local conditions and/or statutory requirements.
See, this is the part that we'll be talking about, but it doesn't... And that looks like they're just putting the light down again, but...
But it doesn't say that.
By being, it looks like, it looks like they're spiking it down to eight there or something. But I can't imagine putting all that in and leaving that bad of a surface there, so...
They've been doing it for thirty years.
Yeah, but they're, but we're coming in to do this extensive work on signals itself, I would think they would take care of that. itself, I would think they would take care of that.
I would entertain the motion to accept this.
Do we want more answers first?
We can.
Or do you want to accept it and then ask the question?
I should maybe ask, if you're gonna call, ask him on that part of the, like, matting or concrete. I'm sure it would be, maybe it'd be better to do that, if you're gonna contact and see what they're saying. They're gonna do, railroads are gonna do what they want, but...
And I might get hold of Jeff Ebert, because he's our district administrator for the area.
Yeah, but he, well, yeah, he maybe would know, but, like I said, it's the railroad itself that's doing, I mean...
They might need a little nudge to do something now and be good for the next ten years.
Well, you're right there, too, all right.
Madam Chair, if the state is paying eighty percent, I would say the state has a lot to say about it.
Oh, yeah. For sure. I would call.
Ben Burser, I guess you're contacting Ben Burser.
It looks like all. Anything else you're good at, Eric?
Um, yes. This last week, well, two weeks ago, and this last week as well, three of us received an email from Amelia McEwen with Mako, that there was a safety training last week, and if we didn't have somebody attend, we were going to be hit with higher insurance rates. So, I called Brian, and he actually had, couldn't leave because there are only two of them in his department. And the other thing is, he has had a personal issue that day, so he couldn't go. I was at the Board of Crime Control, I hadn't heard anything from you guys, so I asked Mike to go, as he has experience in safety. He did, and he came back with a whole lot of information that I think we weren't aware of. We had a safety officer who has not been with us since June. Our last county safety meeting was March, I'm thinking, maybe April, and we had one scheduled for the week after we lost our safety officer. So we haven't had any kind of a safety meeting since late spring, which is out of compliance. So, we need to get on that, and I think we need to get on it diligently. A whole day, like I said, at the crime prevention conference was on workplace safety. So, there's an awful lot that we need to address. We had, our safety officer was responsible for going over the workman's comp claims, there needs to be a committee that does that, this committee. We also gave a part-time job, too, of getting the county budget done. So she hasn't had time to do it. So, we need to get back on track of safety. With that in mind, I would like to request that we have a safety meeting with Amelia, Brian, and Mike, and the three of us, so that we're all on the same page. I made an appointment with Amelia to talk to her next week, but with the way things are, there's no way that coming back with a report is gonna do us any good. So, I think the three of us need to be there, I think the three of us need to hear the information together. So, I would like to request that on October twenty-fourth, we have a second working meeting to accommodate Brian's schedule at two-thirty, it's a Thursday, to put a county safety program in place. There is an act, it is a legal, the Montana Employee Safety Act, I have the book, so I don't butcher the name. But anyway, we need to get on this, Montana Safety Culture Act, it was from nineteen ninety-nine. So, is there any argument against that? Okay.
The eighth is the twenty-third, you said twenty-fourth?
October, she said. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we have a working meeting on Wednesday, the twenty-third, and a working meeting on Thursday, the twenty-fourth, both at two-thirty, unless...
What's the one on thirty-fourth?
That's what we've just been talking about.
Why, can't we work that in on this?
Because there isn't time.
That's a different issue. The other thing is, is the Mako conference, again, Franklin and I both sat in together on a class with Mike Saystad, Chief Legal Counsel for Mako, in which he talked about all the meeting laws, agendas, and minutes. Basically, the fact that counties have managerial work to do, and we are by statute the managers of the county, that falls within our statutoryal responsibilities. And so, many of the things, we have any more items of discussion, covered the gamut of things, but we have a responsibility to manage this county, and sometimes that means we have to vote to replace controls for heaters, or vote for new stoves that have propane leaks, and that fits under, it's called ministerial duties, and they're not necessarily able to be noticed, because we only have one week, a weekly newspaper. So, that comes from Mike, and of course Franklin was in on the exact same class.
Sounds good to me.
Okay. So, as far as the working meeting on the twenty-third, can we have, if things don't work out for the two-thirty, have that information by Friday afternoon so that notices can get posted? Okay. I'd say Friday afternoon at twelve? Okay. It is a great way to absolutely stymie and halt all county business, to have every single small, minute detail have to be noticed. And then, of course, we're looking at eight-hour meetings, five days a week.
That's true. Any thoughts?
Not yet. I think we'll have to plan the journal's working meeting, do you wanna get that next week? Okay. So, I thought.
Franklin, anything? I'll move that, that we adjourned. Wait, have we received MBAC's third court report for the show blow? I haven't seen it yet. That I can check into that? Anything else? Anything else?
John, I got one more question. We've, I know you've heard it, and you've heard it from the service department, again, just by me, this question of Carla micromanaging parts of this county, and setting rules and regulations which are in violation of the law.
John, I'm not comfortable talking about that without Carla being right here.
Well, she came with, not five minutes after this session was over, so she's, she's micromanaging you.
No, she's not.
Well, she is, she's arranging it. Okay? My question is, with her doing this, and quoting, when there's an actual absolute case of trespass, damage to private property, and for her to make a statement and close a case where it's over, and then turn right around and promote a deed that's been set in the, the judgment that's been set in lieu for nine years, it's time you call her on the carpet to deal with it. Because she's setting the county up for tremendous, tremendous liabilities.
Thank you, John.
All right, I think that's the end of it.
We adjourn until next Monday at ten o'clock.
Yeah. No, I'm, we're still... Yeah, it's just, it's just shut down now.
You'll enjoy your life in the senior center.
And I'll tell you what happened here.
You wanna join us that day?
Sure.
All right, all right. Cool, twenty-eight.
Yeah.
All right. Sorry about that.